Oh, my God.
The United States of America, in due part, which stands for the nation under God, individual, jersey, and justice court.
All right, roll call. Chris?
Here.
Haley?
Here.
Jesse?
Here.
Brian?
Here.
Debbie?
Eva?
Here.
Michael?
Here.
All right, and agenda adjustments?
Yes, I have two agenda adjustments. The first agenda adjustment in your packet comes by way of resignation. Employee Loretta Naught, that's K-N-A-U-G-H-T, custodian at PADS, will be a resignation. And the second agenda adjustment would come by way of new business. C looking to add ad hoc town charter review committee members. Ad hoc town charter committee members.
Mr. Grant?
Yes, ma'am.
I do have another adjustment. So the trip is actually for key club and it's decon, not key leader. They're similar, they're both for leadership, but they just have a different title.
So that would be decon, key leader trip? Or decon leader trip?
Key club, decon trip.
Key?
And that's D-E-C-O-N.
Con, key club, decon trip.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So those are the three agenda adjustments.
Yep, I make a motion to approve the agenda adjustments. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Okay, I make a motion to approve the minutes from the January 18th, 2024 meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Next up, we'd like to welcome Mr. Adams for the key club decon trip.
Hello, everyone. I'm Mr. Adams, I'm the key club advisor, also a teacher here at Herman High School. And this trip is an important trip for our students. We've gone on it every year for the past, as long as I've been here and even longer before that. It's down in Springfield, Massachusetts. And it's an important trip for leadership, for the students to essentially train in leadership qualities. They can attend lots of different workshops. They also participate in community service down on that trip. And this is our largest group in the past few years. We have 26 members going just from our key club. We also have three district officers going, so there'll be 29 Herman students that'll be attending this conference. And as it's an out-of-state trip, we just need approval for that, and that's what I'm seeking tonight.
I think that's an excellent opportunity that the students have, and I'm so thankful that you're taking them there. I make a motion to approve the trip. Do I have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you guys very much.
Next up, I want to address the public comments from last meeting. I want to thank Terry and acknowledge the DNS report is now available, so we're happy to provide a copy of that if you want to stop by the superintendent's office. I want to acknowledge the comments from Wendy Newell. She had concerns about an email that was sent, and I want to assure her that all concerns are taken seriously, and appropriate action was taken on that. And I want to acknowledge Greg had comments, and he, I know that you have a copy of the full DNS report. And Rebecca Hinchcliffe, I want to acknowledge, yes, a small part of what is out there, if you were to Google Herman, isn't positive these days, but I will say, there's a lot of amazing things that we are doing, and I'm so proud of the faculty and students for that. We have a very strong academic success. We have a long history with Carmel Levant. To see what other committee members have.
Thanks, Stephanie. I'm going to embarrass Eva Benjamin. Good. Folks may have heard that Eva won the Maine Principals Association award, so we are so proud of you and proud that you represent Herman here on the committee, but also out across the whole state, so thank you.
Jesse?
I'm also.
Haley?
Yep, I have several things. I also second what Stephanie said about the great programs. I want to note that there are several students that have awards. I love reading through the packets. I want to assure all the principals and all the admin that we do read those. And I too want to second that, congratulations to Eva Benjamin on your principal award. That's an amazing accomplishment, and you, you do us, so congratulations. I also want to recognize those that are retiring, there are several. Thank you for all your service to Herman, that is quite impressive, 44 years, I think I saw, so that, thank you for that. I'm usually prevented from asking lots of questions, so I want to make a special mention to the curriculum coordinator and special ed. Fabulous report, I appreciate all that information. It was really nice to see that kind of communication, it's been a while, so I appreciate that. High school, middle school guidance, wanted to thank them for writing letters to the parents and keeping them informed. I think that is the key to restoring trust in our community, so that is, I'm glad that you guys are doing that again. I did not see the technology report included for the community. I've heard lots of claims that there was a lot of progress around technology. It was unfortunate that the meeting was canceled, so that we were not able to discuss what that consists of. That is something that's been canceled several times, so hopefully...
Did you have other positive comments? Because that's what this section was.
Well, you also say that I can't speak during public comment, so I can, which is it?
Did you have other positive committee acknowledgements?
I agree that this is positive time, but before, when I've tried to speak, you've said I have to do it during this time, which I don't like doing.
Continue on.
Excuse me?
Continue on, please.
Thank you. It's unfortunate that that committee, which needs a lot of work, is not taking place, and that a lot of us reran our schedule to be there, last minute being canceled. This is like the third time in a matter of months. We have a lot of responsibilities, and that work is to be done in subcommittees, which would make these meetings go faster.
That's Ryan?
Yeah, I, Mr. Walsh let me know about the multi-pathways meeting that they had had this month, and it was very impressive to see the academic opportunities that our students have, and it would have been nice to see that it was better attended, because I was really surprised at what we do offer our students. So please put the word to the street that the multiple pathways that the high school offers is really good information, and the sooner you get it for your students, I think the better, so that you have a better opportunity to digest it, and your students can be better prepared when they get into the high school. So thank you, Mr. Walsh, for letting me know about that.
Eva?
So I just want to say, I just got back from the regional poetry out loud competition. Unfortunately, I'm not moving on to the statewide, but it was a really great opportunity to represent Herman High School at that regional competition. I even got a little medal.
Awesome.
That's pretty good size. So here at the high school, there's a lot going on. This week is winter carnival, so that's really great for the students. Everybody's enjoying it so far. I've heard a lot of positive feedback. And during this week, NHS is collecting change during the change wars to donate to the literacy volunteers of Bangor, which is part of the literacy volunteers of Maine. And recently, NHS did a book drive to donate to that same organization. Throughout this week, there'll be after-school activities where students can engage with both the school, community, and earn points for winter carnival. So on Thursday, Student Council has an ice skating event at Penobscot Ice Arena, and that will have transportation provided, and the event will be free for all students to attend. And then Student Council also participated in the Winter Kids event with the PADS school, and a lot of high schoolers went down, volunteered there. I went down after school one day and did it, it was super fun. I got to snowshoe, which was surprisingly difficult, but the kids really enjoyed it, both at the elementary and the high school level.
A few days ago, the cheerleading team went to states. They came out at third place, which is really nice for them. On February 6th, the varsity boys' basketball team hosted a veterans' night alongside their senior night, for all of our veterans out there. Recently, the unified basketball team started up. Right now, they are 2-1, really enjoying the season. And lastly, I'd like to give you a thing, give a thank you to all the teachers out there that are retiring, and another an integral part of the school, and they mean a lot to the students, so I'd just like to give a thank you to them.
Awesome, thank you so much. I know you've been doing awesome in wrestling, and I want to recognize Delaney in hockey too, because she's been doing amazing. All the students seem to be so excited about winter carnival. I want to acknowledge that we've brought back the Junior Achievement Program, which is teaching financial literacy to kids, and anybody that has free time as a community member, I would strongly encourage you to do that and volunteer in the classroom and really make a difference for the kids. And I also want to recognize our guidance counselors as National School Counseling Week, so I really, really appreciate all that you guys have done. And next up, we are going to move to public comment, and I'll have someone keep time. Just as a reminder, this is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on agenda items, contribute info that may be of interest to the school committee, or ask clarifying questions. Please wait to be recognized and identify yourself before speaking. This is not the time to register complaints or promote a personal agenda. Please remember that you may not identify any person by name or job function, so we'd like to welcome Ed Ford.
Thank you, I'm Ed Ford, Herman. I'd like to see if the school board might be able to come, I was looking at the retirement of some of these folks, and I did see in the packet that one of those teachers was having a retirement party of some nature. And I wonder, is there a way that the school board could actually pay for that? I feel bad, here's a woman who served 44 years, and her friends and family got to pay $25 a piece to attend that, so I don't know if that's something that the school board could do. And look, this may be a fundraiser, I didn't see if that was a fundraiser of some nature, so that may be the case, but I certainly wonder if maybe the school board can, could consider paying for that event for that teacher. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Greg Newell.
Greg Newell, Herman. Chair Committee Members Superintendent, despite every attempt you've made to, behind the scenes, to remove me from all things related to the school, just, just know, I'm a parent who cares about everyone here, and I will continue to end all meetings for at least the next 10 years. My motive remains the same, I want you to provide a safe, reliable network and systems to all whose you serve. This is currently not happening, and hasn't happened for a very long time. Here's a list, here's a list over the past six months. This information's in the packet that I handed out. You hired a student data technology specialist who doesn't meet the qualifications. You intentionally took over five months to hire a new IT director when we could have had one in two months or less. You also got a reference to a potential candidate in August. The superintendent committee did not hire qualified IT director. The resume reveals he has no experience...
I would ask that you don't speak to our employees, please.
What employee name did I state?
Job function. And title.
And title.
Yeah.
I didn't say the name.
I understand, but I'm asking to please.
Yep, I'll, I'll say the individual in another did this. Gotcha. Okay, thank you. The super, uh, let's see. There was a candidate at the last town meeting that had 18 years of IT experience and had been a director, IT director, and somehow, we got a person that didn't meet any of that. Let's see, without, let's see. Without board approval, the superintendent hired a company to assessment of the school district IT. They didn't have the qualifications or capability of doing it. I've voided the IT reports, this committee and superintendent wasted over 20K on a simple paper. Mostly contained, mostly the information contained should have been from this IT department. We should have already known this. When I asked DNS what standard they use, they wouldn't have asked me. In fact, they threatened me. Obviously, something's going on here. It took me all of three minutes to find NIST K-12 standard for assessing schools' IT program. NIST stands for the National Institute for Standard Technology, a US federal agency. I've voided all the memorandums of understanding and/or contractual agreements for DNS. I got a spreadsheet. This tells me that superintendent did one of two things, paid out money to DNS with no signed contract, which is against policy, or he violated FOA. Which is it? The DNS papers show that the current superintendent and previous ones, along with this committee, have not been checking or evaluating the IT department for a very long time. Ransomware attack, DNS not do...
I'd ask you to finish up your comments, please.
Yep, sure will. I'll just take my time back from when you interrupted me. That'll cover my time. Because they don't do that kind of work. The local agent couldn't even tell me what standard they use, or the person's credential who did the work. Very strange.
Thank you for your comments.
And certs are very specific for this, because the law enforcement and legal, because a crime was committed against the school. The school IT is not meeting E-rate rules.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Newell.
Public notice hearing or meetings, a school library shall provide reasonable public notice...
We're going to go to recess?
...hold at least one public hearing or meeting to address the proposed internet safety policies. We've, we have never done this.
We're going to recess for five minutes, we'll be back.
I know that we can, we have not done this for the current E-rate session, among other things. Is anyone going to take responsibility for all these broken policies and laws? Is anyone going to handle the accountable for this?
Mr. Newell, excuse me.
Is anyone looking for students? Oh, sorry.
I do want to hear you, but I just came with a distraction, so I apologize for that. But you were, kept talking, so I, can you just finish that last part? Because I didn't hear what you were saying.
Sure, absolutely. So, I said, was it the ransomware attack you didn't hear? Okay. So, the ransomware attack, DNS did not do a forensic audit, because they do not do that kind of work. The local agent couldn't even tell me what standard they used, or the person's credentials who did the work. Very strange. The IT standard and certs are very specific for this because of law enforcement and legal, because a crime was committed against the school district. The school IT is not meeting E-rate rules now or in the past. This is a quote, "Public notice hearing or meeting, a school or library shall provide reasonable public notice and hold at least one public hearing or meeting to address the proposed internet safety policy." We have not done this, and I cannot find, and I know I have not done this for the current E-rate session, among other things.
Can I ask you a couple of questions?
Absolutely.
You said the statement, removed from things from the school, and then you also said threatened. Can you just clarify what you meant? Because that's...
Say that last part, I didn't quite hear you. My hearing's back.
You said, you were removed from all things from the school, and then you said you were threatened. I'm just curious.
Yep, so I was a substitute teacher. I'm, I have no longer received any more phone calls. I was since January, there has been none, and I continue to get no phone calls. The, when I asked the DNS Albany person what standard they used to evaluate the IT district, the whole district, he got very upset with me and asked why I need to know that statement. This would be like asking the plumber, what type of plumbing code are you using? Also, I wanted to find out what credentials this person had, because there was a crime, because you're auditing a government agency, you have to have the correct credentials to do a forensic audit. There's, it's very specified within the industry. I, examples, the whole nine yards. No, they has, has the law and regulations highlighted for them, so they don't have to search for it. I've excerpted it out and put it right in the front forum. I pulled out, put the DNS reports in there, highlighted all the spots that was, that I talked about, and I set it all the way through, so, and created a nice book for them to carry.
Okay, we're now going to move on to...
Brian's not back yet.
Oh, okay. We're now going to move on to personnel resignations.
We have several resignations, and some, some very significant ones. We are very sad to see, I'm going to go in order here. Sad to see Janice Klain is retiring after 44 years, as, and has served in so many capacities, but most notably as a foreign language teacher. I know that she will be missed, and that the type of leader that she has been here in the building, I know some of you around the table probably had or certainly knew Ms. Klain. She was instrumental in my career, not so much on the teaching side, but on the advisor side. She was always a resource that you could go to if you were a class advisor, if you were helping with key club or student council, whatever the case might be. And she is going to be missed here at the high school, at Herman High School, so we just obviously want to wish her the best of luck in retirement. I know that she'll be climbing Katahdin and taking care of trails and things of that nature. In our central office, not to be overlooked, Rhonda Hashi, you probably, many of you will recognize her when you come in and sign warrants. She has been the Special Service Administrative Assistant for 29 years, and she is also retiring this year. I believe it's in the middle of June, and she has been a very warm face and a very, again, just a tremendously friendly person to greet people when they come in and Jody's not there. She, she helps out in that capacity. I know Cindy's going to miss her, and we just, again, couldn't, we wish her the best, but she will be very hard to replace. In addition to that, Deb Merrill is retiring as a chemistry teacher here at Herman High School. Deb has been with the district for 20 years, so you, you know, between those three people, you're, you know, you're well over 80 years of experience, you know, between the high school and the central office. Ms. Merrill's probably noticed or notable for burning bad, poorly done homework assignments with buns and burners. I don't know if we, that happens anymore, but I heard about it when I was teaching and thought, I wish I was a science teacher. So Deb is going to be missed 20 years here at Herman High School, and again, for, for me personally, you know, I started my teaching career, these people were staples in the building to, so to accept their resignations was a very surreal feeling. And then Rebecca York is moving to Southern Maine. She has, came to us from Brewer, she's been with us, I believe, for five years as our PE teacher at the elementary school. Kids love her. She's just absolutely fantastic over there. She is going down to Southern Maine, and we wish her the best of luck. And as I mentioned earlier, Loretta Naught, from the elementary school custodian, she's been with us for just over a year and a half, and so she is getting done as well. So a lot of heavy resignations, but we wish them the best of luck.
Next up for old business, oh wait, do we have? No, I think the co-curriculars are just as listed, correct?
Yes.
We don't vote on those.
That's correct.
Okay. Now we'll go into old business, and I will open it up to public comment. And I'll close public comment. We had no absent school committee members last month, but I did want to acknowledge that Deb was sorry she was not able to attend tonight. They have their own teacher negotiations in their district. So I make a motion to approve the second reading of the 24-25 school calendar. Do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
I just wanted to note that the day in PADS was moved to, that we pointed out last, last month, was changed to a remote day. Correct?
That date hasn't been set by the state yet, that was our best guess.
Okay. Yep, but it was updated in the calendar, that's what we voted on. It hasn't been approved by the state yet, but it's listed, that's the only change to the calendar from last month.
Yes, as soon as we get the official... Yes, as soon as we get the official date, it will go into the new drafted calendar and be ready to go for the fall.
Yep.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Next up, the second reading of policies. I make a motion to approve the second reading to rescind policy CF Principles General Provisions. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Next, I make a motion to approve the second reading of policy CHD. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Next up, I make a motion to approve the second reading to rescind policy GCD. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Next up, I make a motion to approve the second reading to rescind policy JJCA. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Next up, I make a motion to approve the second reading to approve the second reading of policy JKAR. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Next, for new business, I want to open it up to public comment. And I'll close public comment. I make a motion to approve the first reading to adopt policy DFF, Student Activities Funds. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Did you say to rescind?
Adopt.
Under new business, number one, motion to approve the first reading to adopt policy DFF. Any discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
In place of the current policy, so replace it with this, correct?
Replace what?
To adopt the policy that's presented in the...
All the student funds, I'm sorry, I'm thinking of the other one, I'm sorry.
DFF. Any discussion on DFF? All those in favor? Motion carries. Next up, I make a motion to approve the first reading of policy GBEBA, Dress and Grooming. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion?
Yeah, I didn't see the... I didn't see those policies in this packet, so... No, they're physical restraint, yes, but...
Can you show me where?
I just wasn't able to review the revisions that you made, so I don't know what they consist of. For... Earlier, and then I saw on the list, and so I thought, "I must have missed it," and I still don't see it.
Okay, no problem. I'll make a motion to table the next three. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
How can we go about reviewing those? Can you send those to us, the revisions?
I mean, we had them in our packets, but if we would like more time, then we will review them for the next time. That's why I'm tabling them. So, they'll be in the next packet for the next school committee meeting.
Do you need a second?
Yep.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor to table those? Motion carries. Next up, Micah, it's you under new business, the purchase of a replacement refrigerator freezer.
Yes, I have two bids here for replacing the refrigerator here at the high school. One is from Powell Refrigeration, and one is from Bali Refrigerated Boxes Incorporated. The... I'm going to hand these around. We tried to hold off up until this week on a third vendor who said they would bid it out and have still not come to schedule a time to bid that project out. And we have to make a motion and get this scheduled. So, you've got two bids there, like I said, from those two companies. Just want to note that this money to replace the freezer, it is not for... It's not going to be out of a cost center. This is out of your food service fund balance, which is a completely separate account, and you're looking at, and I'm just now going off the top of my head, you're looking at about $77,000 for Powell, and you're looking at about $65,000 for Bali. I have a recommendation, if the committee would like to hear my recommendation. I would recommend that we go with Powell. It is a more expensive bid. However, it includes the removal of the old freezer, and that was not included in the bid of the other company. And additionally, Powell has been... Anytime we have a problem with our current freezer, or we had a pretty significant problem this summer and lost quite a bit of food, they've been the ones who have come in and helped us, you know, getting it back up and running. And so, we feel very comfortable that they know this freezer pretty intimately. So, between those two factors of their knowledge, plus theirs does include the removal of the current freezer, we feel that their quote is competitive, and that's what I would recommend.
Just for clarification, Mr. Grant, this is the same freezer that, I think it was probably two or three months ago, was brought up to the finance committee, and we asked for... We put it back to see if there were other bids. Same situation, now you've got the bids back?
Yes, Brian, we were able to get one additional bid, could not get a third bid for this project. And we would obviously like to get this scheduled as soon as the school year is completed and have somebody in here in June or July.
You're not looking for a vote on this tonight, because we just got the information correct?
No, I'm looking for a vote on this to approve the funding.
Say it again.
Yes, I am looking for a motion to approve the Powell quote for the $77,000 to replace this freezer.
I make a motion to approve the Powell freezer as presented. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
It would be helpful if these bids were emailed to us like they used to be, so we could review them and make informed decisions.
Review them for what?
Just for information.
Do you know a lot about freezers and replacements?
I know how to read.
I didn't say you didn't know how to read. I just asked if you knew about freezer replacement.
Powell's the local bid, though, correct? I mean, I'm looking at the address on it. Powell's is here in Edington. Bailey is out of North Carolina.
Correct.
And the price difference is based off, and Powell is going to remove the old and dispose of it. And Bailey did not bid that portion of the project, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Were they asked to?
Yes.
They were asked to include that in the bid, and they didn't?
Yes. That's not something that they do.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Let's get a minute.
Yeah. All those in favor? All those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next up, the Ad Hoc Town Charter Committee. I make a motion to approve Brian Venziano and myself to that committee. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Where did you come to that conclusion, and why it wasn't open for discussion?
It's open for discussion right now.
So, why did you choose both of you?
I made a motion to do that. That's... I have the ability as chair to make a motion. Do you have anything that you wanted to add to that?
Well, I'm well versed in law and policy and spent a lot of time going over school and policies and the needs and charter needs, and have been an outspoken advocate for that. So, I would like to sit on that committee. I think I have a lot of experience. It makes me qualified to do so.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Next up, administrative reports. Micah, I will start with you.
In addition to my report, I would like to add that the PFAS filtration system has been completed. We will have to wait the results of another test through the state. Remember, that is a quarterly test currently, and I will then be able to... I believe it is only one test. I'll verify that, but I believe after that test, if we come back under the levels as set forth by the state, then we will be able to go back to the water, you know, consuming the water directly from the variety of sources here at the school. So, that, like I said, is in place, and that is excellent for the building. It would be nice to not have bottles floating everywhere.
Can I ask a couple of questions on that, Mr. Grant?
On the PFAS?
Yes. Well, on the system. Does that go to just the drinking water, or is it like all water that's filtered? Just curious.
Based upon where the filters are, I believe it is all water, but I will have to check that.
Okay. And so, the buildings down near the Booster Club, now in the football field, those buildings that have kitchen and they're prepping food, is that going to be part of that?
I will have to check to see if this is the same source.
And then, as far as the bottled water, I noticed that we were paying for that, is that right?
Yes.
Is that refunded to us through the state?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you.
You said the HMS... Sorry, the boosters, where they prep food?
What was that?
Sorry, I was just asking the question again, so I get the right answer. Boosters, club prep, okay.
On the administrative reports, I just want to draw attention to one area. You know, we never can forget why it is that we're here, and it's for our kids. And I just want to ask Leslie Smith about, around the mental health of our kids. I think that that's just not talked about enough, and I was just hoping that maybe Leslie... Sorry to put you on the spot, but if you could give us an update, are you seeing increased numbers? I just was hoping you could provide an update.
Sure. So, we actually, in the last decade, have seen an increase of mental health needs amongst our students, especially in the last four or five years. Since the pandemic, we have seen an increase of depression and anxiety and concerns just in regards to mental health. In fact, last week, the Maine Integrated Youth Health Survey results came back from the 2023 administration, and in the state of Maine, 35% of our youth reported feeling sad or helpless. The good news is, is 31% are asking for help. And then, much of that comes through our school counselors here. And I've got to tell you, our department is on it. They're doing a wonderful job trying to manage that. We cannot expect our students to check their mental health at the door. It's just not going to happen. And so, whether they're dealing with any sort of family trauma, or any sort of anxiety or depression, we work with them and their families on getting them the support. In regards to the day-to-day work, it's definitely solution-focused and problem-solving, and in order to eliminate mental health barriers, so that students can return to class and be educated and be in that learning environment. So, we work with our families and our students. We provide that support. We also provide preventative tools, like our guidance classes, that focus on social skills and collaboration and conflict resolution, as well as our K through eight groups. They do the guidance lessons, but they also do friendship groups with the permission of parents, of course, social skill groups, and then, of course, our collaboration with families to get them resources in the community for any therapeutic resources, any potential food insecurity, oil bills, things of that nature, addiction resources, that kind of thing. So, we are seeing an increase. We've seen it in the last decade or so, and especially in the last four or five years. And then, you take those situations and you compound it with the complexity of each developmental stage from K through 12, and especially when they get to the teen level of dealing with social media pressure and just navigating the teen years, we just want to make sure they continue to have that support. And I'm really grateful for our group and the work that they do.
Thank you. I really appreciate you giving us an update, and honestly, that's something that I want to make sure that the committee is focused on going forward, is just talking about that every month, because it's so important. I appreciate you guys collaborating with the parents and getting them those resources. It's certainly not easy. The other thing in the administrative reports, I think, to Brian's point, I think it's important for us to bring back to the core why we're here. Let's focus on the kids' learning and see the progress there. So, to the degree that the administrators can really add that, and like you guys already are, I think that that's going to be key. So, thank you, Leslie.
And I just want to add that if any parent or community member has a question about our services, as I mentioned last May at the school board meeting, please call me, because we are very open. We want to talk to you. We want to talk to families. We do talk to families. We include them in our decision-makings with their children. They're very much a part of that. So, please give me a call anytime.
Thank you.
Thanks, Leslie.
We didn't finish the superintendent report. Did you want to give updates on the rest of the technology, because that wasn't included in the packet either, so is there any...
Nope. As I stated, we have switched over to MSLN, and we have purchased a new firewall. We've also ordered new servers. So, I believe Mr. Bridges' email to the committee was pretty accurate into what's happening in technology.
I was just curious if those bids were sent out for those firewalls and servers. I didn't see it in the grant, so I wasn't sure. I've sent an email, I didn't get a reply. Were there bids sent out for those?
For the servers and the firewall?
Yes.
Yes.
And who did you go with? What company?
I don't know.
Did we have any questions on finance, the finance report?
I'd like to thank Mrs. Youngblood for helping with the, getting a detailed financial report out for us. Just to give an overview, where we're at year-to-date, our revenue is at a $9.9 million, or 52% of our annual revenue. Our expense is at $10.5 million, which is 55% of our annual revenue. Along with the carry-forward balance, puts us at a fund balance of a $2.5 million on hand, with an unassigned balance of $1.5 million, which is at 8.9% of the allowed, unassigned fund balance in accordance with DOE's guidance, and that's year-to-date, not off the annual report. So, year-to-date as of 30 January.
Awesome.
And then, just a quick update on what the finance committee's had. We had a fin... Did you want to do the finance committee, or... Finance committee started the budget work for FY '25. All's going well. We have some work to do, but we've got a very cooperative group going on, and we've got representation and assistance from the town council. So, we had our second meeting tonight, and we've got the cost center information for us to digest and to work on for our next meeting. So, that seems to be going well.
Awesome. And before we... Awesome. And before we get into the subcommittee meetings, I just want to be really clear because I think that there's been some confusion. But individual board members, or committee members and subcommittee members, do not have the authority to act on their own, and that includes reaching out to vendors. The only time that we have the ability to act is as a committee as we sit here. And I just really want to make that very crystal clear because as a result of that action, we have lost a vendor, and that is certainly not in the best interest of our district. So I just really want to make it clear that no individual committee member is to be reaching out to vendors. And also, committee members, we really cannot be interfering with employees getting, and the administration getting their job done. And so because of that, I'm asking that all concerns that we have be directed to me, and we can filter them appropriately. I just really want the employees, the administration to be focused on our kids, so.
Absolutely agree. So the question that was asked to the vendor, that, what was the question that made them not want to work here?
There, there have been several communications by individuals that have resulted in the vendor no longer wanting to work with us.
Because they weren't want to speak to that? Able to answer the question?
No, because of the general harassment that they received and the libel and defamation that they are worried about. And they were, they reached out to me and were shocked at the conduct of individuals and said they no longer feel that our businesses worth that type of treatment of them. And that's pretty disheartening, obviously, to hear that people are going rogue and impacting you in a very negative way. So, no, there was no specific question that was asked. It was completely and utterly about tone, respect, defamation, and liability that they decided that they no longer want to work with us, which is very detrimental to some of the things that we have going on right now.
So to be very clear, when we were talking about audits for the school system, Mr. Grant asked me to reach out to people, which I did. And that person actually, the issue was so severe, they weren't interested in even working with the school. So when you say that we're not asked to, that is exactly what he asks, and you ask us often.
The two vendors that you've reached out to, we did not give you authority to reach out to.
Mr. Grant asked, and the community members has asked, he asked Mr. Venziano to, to reach out to the town for information.
I did, in a public setting.
That is, as a subcommittee, we're gathering information.
I did not ask him to reach out to a vendor. I asked him-
I didn't reach out to the vendor, to be very clear. I am clarifying that if a question was asked about a service that they provide, and they couldn't answer it, and they chose to walk away, let's be clear about the accusation that you're saying.
I'm just going to repeat and be clear that no individual committee member has the authority to reach out to vendors. Period.
Who did?
Did, moving on, do we have an update on the facilities, track, and safety committee?
We, for some reason, they aren't scheduling facilities meetings, so can't help you with that one. As far as the track, I don't have an update.
Okay, moving on to finance. Brian, you already gave an update on that, correct? And policy-
Sorry, if I could, just for Brian, the 27th meeting?
Yes.
I have a prior commitment that starts at 5:00, so I'll be there for the first half of that meeting, and then I'll have to jump out a little early. Just want to give you a heads up.
Thank you.
So for policy committee, we'll continue to review the old policies. We don't need to bring these other ones forward again. Just have them in the packet for next time.
Yeah.
Tech committee?
Again, that was canceled without any sort of board discussion, no explanation as to why. I find it a little odd that the two committees that I sit on continue to be not scheduled or canceled so that I have no ability to communicate or be informed. My emails aren't answered from anybody. You are very clearly making these decisions outside of committee or not informing me based on the fact that you're ordering things, and none of those bids are coming forward for board votes. When is that taking place? Like, we have authority and need to be watching over those things, and yet it's not being discussed, or it's not being discussed through the proper channels. I know you guys meet outside of committee meetings, although you're not supposed to be conducting business, but.
I hear you with your concerns, and I did reply to you on the tech committee meeting that Alex is working on many different things, as we saw in his report. And I did mention to you that he didn't have, I believe it's, correct me if I'm wrong, the 18-month plan drafted yet, and so that was why. And also, it's budget and negotiation season. So that was what Micah had to focus on. So I did reply to you on that.
I stand corrected. The second time, and when I point-blank asked you, you did thankfully-
Okay, did you have anything else to add?
I think that there had been a lot of information and a lot of reports with technology, and I think it was a missed opportunity to have that communication with the new director and build a working relationship with the committee and subcommittee with Mr. Bridges.
Okay. Anything else to add there? Any spruce update?
There's a meeting Thursday.
Okay, great.
This week.
Thank you. Possible future agenda items will go around the room. Chris?
I'm okay.
Jesse?
All set.
Haley?
Still subcommittee policy.
Thank you. Brian?
I'm all set, thanks.
Michael?
Nothing.
Okay. And next up, approval of warrants. I make a motion to approve the seven warrants listed below. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I do have concerns about the services that we were paying for, that they claim they don't provide, and that we are going to try to approve paying that. So when we're paying large amounts of money for audit services and forensics, I'm just, I, I wanted to have that discussion in technology and try to get a better understanding.
What specific expenses were you concerned about that you saw on the warrants?
Information to a technology, money to a technology company that stated that they weren't qualified to do the work, but we were paying for it. I'm concerned about that.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I have a comment to that comment.
Yep.
That is something that I can bring forward because the work that they're providing is a legal matter. And so perhaps I can have the attorney brief the committee on that legal matter and the work that that vendor provided, specifically, I'm assuming to some of the warrants in question. And we could bring that forward either in March or April, when our attorney was willing to brief us on the, on an update.
I mean, if we'd like to spend money on that, sure.
Yep.
Any other discussion?
Ms. Soiler, when you say something like that-
Did you have any other discussion about the warrants?
Yes, you just made a statement. I'm going to respond. You said if you want to spend money like that, having the lawyer brief us, I think it matters if we're spending $20,000 on a company that's not qualified. I think we should have that discussion.
Again, I think this is the defamation and liability that that vendor is talking about because these statements are being made.
It's their words. It's their words.
Any other discussion specifically about these warrants?
That is-
All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. I make a motion to enter executive session pursuant to Juan MRSA 4056D, Discussion of Labor Contract Negotiations with the Herman Educational Association Teachers at 7:27 PM.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay.